I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one at six thirty P. M. Good evening, everybody. Per the Governor's Executive Order twenty dash sixteen regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. The city council meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and your phone number. The city upgraded its Zoom software so it allows us to easily conduct events with a simpler interface in a professional setting. There are two groups of participants. Those are panelists and attendees. Panelists are those you will see on the platform such as the elected officials, city administrator, city attorney, staff, or any person that's making a presentation. Attendees are those in the audience. Attendees will still be able to speak for three minutes during business from the audience or during agenda items if they submitted their request to speak before noon today. If someone raises their hand to speak, unfortunately, they will not be recognized. Additionally, if members of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruption, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. We will start our meeting with the introduction of the newest member of our police force Sergeant Travis Hill, followed by three presentations, the first by Water and Environmental Services, also referred to as Wes. They're going to go over the State of the District Annual Report by Greg Geist. We will have our annual library report by Mitzi Olson and the Clackamas County, excuse me, Clackamas Community College Report by Board Member Dave Hunt. Our consent agenda includes approval of the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting minutes, approval of the December bank balances, budget report for periods ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, approval of the December check register, legal costs on projects, and the department had monthly reports for January two thousand and twenty. Our regular meeting agenda includes Resolution one one eight nine, extended property tax exemption with the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone for an additional two years for a total of five for investments by Moses Lake Industries, Inc., appointments to the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and the Senior Center Advisory Board, and the two thousand and twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three budget calendar. I have that correct, yes. Um, Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes, figured it out.
Thank you. Counselor Alexander. Counselor Tracy. Counselor Hartman. I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple.
Here. Um, Counselor Alexander could not be here tonight. His, unfortunately, his mother unexpectedly passed away late Sunday night. So, um, yeah, he's home with his family. Sharon was incredible, lovely woman, devoted to the city, and she was actually on Planning Commission thirty-five years ago. So it's a, I'm, I'm thankful that she, she was around long enough to see her son sit here on city council. So our hearts and thoughts are with Greg. Um, we're going to go ahead and start with the flag salute. So Tammy, could you put up the flag?
Uh, everyone should be able to see the flag.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. That was kind of weird, but you know, we'll, we'll iron it out eventually. Um, are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing.
All right, and I don't see any correspondence. So, all right, so first is the consent agenda. Would someone like to pull any items out? Do we have any discussion concerns? Nothing? All right, would someone like to make a motion then?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Todd to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any further discussion, questions, or concerns? I don't hear anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Hi.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes. I'm sorry, I did this backwards. Well, that's good, but we're going to go ahead and go into the presentations. I've got too many pieces of paper here in front of me, and they're all on different pages. All right, so we're going to go ahead and do the introduction of our new Sergeant Travis Hill. So I'll turn it over to Police Chief John Schmuber.
Hi, good evening, council and, and Madam Mayor. Uh, I won't take up much of your time here. I know you guys have a busy calendar, so. Uh, good evening, and I'd like to introduce you, our, our newest hire Sergeant Travis Hill. Sergeant Hill started with the Gladstone Police Department on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and has over nineteen years of law enforcement experience. That includes extensive investigation and operational along with community engagement skills. Sergeant Hill's policing style directly translates to Gladstone Police Department's community policing philosophy, and we are excited to have him here. Sergeant Hill and his wife Katie have three kids and are excited to be part of the city of Gladstone, and we consider we welcome him. You might know him. He's, and he was here for about five years prior, uh, but he's returned to finish his career here as a sergeant, and we'll see where that takes him. So we're excited to have Sergeant Travis Hill, and you see him on screen here. So.
Do we see him? Where's Travis?
Thank you, chief.
Oh, there you are. Hey, Travis.
Hi, Tammy, Mayor, councilors. Looking forward to seeing you all around town and, uh, meeting everyone, and I'm just glad to be here. Thank you.
And just so everybody knows, Travis was the one that got the Fourth of July barbecue started for the city through, for the police department. It was, it was his baby, so I'm glad you're back so you can help do it next year.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Travis. All right, next, we have a presentation from Water and Environmental Services, State of the District Annual Report, Greg Geist.
Hold tight for just a moment.
All right, uh, good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. First of all, I just want to extend condolences to Counselor Alexander, so for the record. Now I'll try to share my screen. Oh, it looks like I need to be enabled to share my screen.
Hold tight.
So I guess I can get started though while we're doing that. So this is actually the second annual report, uh, that Water and Environment Services has presented to Gladstone. You should see a copy of that report in your packet. We're very proud of it. We've got about forty-five minutes tonight to talk, and I'm happy to either take questions at the end or, um, during, just have more of a conversation. So let's see, I'm able to share a screen. Yes. All right, are folks able to see that?
Yep.
Excellent. All right, so two thousand and twenty-one, um, we all know, or two thousand and twenty, sorry, two thousand and twenty-one still. It's been a very challenging year for a lot of reasons. We've had COVID, we've had the fires. At Wes, we had extended electrical outages. It's, it's been a real challenge. We've had, uh, major staff disruptions in order to be resilient against the virus. We are frontline staff. We're absolutely critical to public health and the environment, and so we've asked our staff to do pretty incredible things, uh, change their work locations, change their work hours. And, uh, I just want you to know that we've been there from day one and will continue to serve. The other thing I wanted to mention is our customers. We, we know that they're suffering as well. This year, we waived all, all, all late fees, um, for the whole year. We are not certifying those late fees to the tax roll, uh, and we've expanded and, you know, tried to greatly advertise our low income discount program. So, uh, for those of you watching, um, please visit our website and get information about the low income discount. So for those of you who are unfamiliar with water, Clackamas Water and Environment Services, this is the area that we serve. We serve about a hundred and ninety thousand, uh, people in Clackamas County. We have five wastewater treatment plants, um, twenty-three pump stations, over three hundred and sixty miles of pipe in the ground, uh, and we treat over seven billion gallons of wastewater per year. Gladstone is, if you don't know, is a really kind of odd, uh, interesting, uh, situation where, uh, pretty unusual. The city is actually served by three different wastewater treatment plants. A portion of the city drains to our Tri-City facility right across the river there, and a portion of it drains to our Kellogg Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant that's in Milwaukee, uh, along the river, along Highway ninety-nine. And then another portion of Gladstone drains to the Oak Lodge Treatment Facility. So pretty interesting and cool. Respecting gravity. So, uh, like I said, a portion of Gladstone does drain to our Kellogg, uh, Water Resource Recovery Facility, and so I wanted to update you on some of the upgrades that we're doing there. That facility came online in nineteen seventy-four, um, for a lot of reasons, uh, through the nineties and early two thousands. It was not well maintained or invested in because its future was uncertain. So in two thousand and seventeen, we began a series of projects there, refurbishment and replacement projects to really bring it up to modern standards. We've addressed about a dozen of our, uh, what we call unit processes, but, uh, portions of that collection or treatment system. Uh, it's been very successful, and we've got more coming in two thousand and twenty-one. I don't have a lot of time for detail. There is a video on our website. If you go to, uh, our website, Wes, uh, on the Clackamas County website, there's a nice video that shows all of the upgrades that we've completed there over the past few years, and we've got more, uh, on the way. Uh, at our Tri-City facility, uh, most people in Gladstone are actually maybe probably aware, uh, because it's a very visible project. So if you look at the picture on the left, um, those large tanks, cylinder tanks, um, are called digesters. The two on the right in the middle of the picture actually exist as, that, that's a real picture, but everything to the left of those is part of a project that we're, that we're wrapping up right now. So the, the digester, the, the other tank on the far left is online and built, uh, and we are in the process of, uh, refurbishing the other two digesters and, um, bringing all of that very, very much online. That was a thirty-four million dollar project. One of the highlights of that project is not only does it accommodate growth, uh, but it more than doubles our ability to generate electricity, uh, at our Tri-City facility. And I'll tell you more, a little bit more about how that works in a minute, actually right now. So just a quick wastewater treatment one-on-one. This is a diagram or a schematic of our Tri-City facility right across the river, and I just want to walk you quickly through what we do there. And I'll, I'll preface this by saying it's, it's a mechanical, uh, it's a biological, and it's a chemical process. So if you look to the left, uh, what we call preliminary treatment. So the first part of the, of the process, uh, those three hundred and sixty miles of pipe and pump stations that get the waste from our community to our treatment plant, it's pumped into our facility, and it goes through a very mechanical process. It goes through bar screens that remove big stuff. Then it goes through a grit removal, which removes things like eggshells and coffee grounds and things like that. Then we slow the water down and let it settle. And so the solids that go down your toilet, uh, settle to the bottom of those basins and are shunted off to those anaerobic digesters, the big tanks, uh, which I equate to stomachs. Following that is the biological process. So we use microorganisms, uh, we cultivate them very deliberately, and we call them bugs. Um, and what we do is we speed up Mother Nature. We take what would happen, you know, take a month or two, uh, if, if all that just went into the river and, and needed to degrade, and we speed that process up immeasurably, uh, into like less than a day. And so those bugs and, and the aeration that we create, um, uh, chews up the, the bad stuff, and that's really the heart of our treatment process. After that, um, it becomes a chemical or, in some cases, ultraviolet. So we take, um, the clarified, the clarified water. So after the secondary treatment goes for a clarifier, more settling happens, uh, and then we skim off that water, and that's what goes to the river. And in many cases, it's, it's cleaner than the river water. So the anaerobic digesters, the things that are in the middle of the tanks, they have a combination of this stuff that settles out in the, in the first part of our treatment process, and essentially the carcasses of those bugs that we use in our biological treatment process. All that goes into this big tank. It's a lot like a stomach, like any stomach that's fed food, it creates gas, and that's called biogas, and that's what we use to, um, generate electricity. The other thing that we produce out of those digesters is, uh, af- after they're done, well, as they're producing biogas, we, we thicken that material, turn it into a natural fertilizer, and send that out to Eastern Oregon as a, uh, fertilizer for agricultural fields. So basically, our treatment plant is a complex, you know, living machine. Uh, we also have a laboratory on our, on our campus. We treat over, or do over thirty thousand analysis per year. Some of those analysis are for regulatory compliance to make sure that the water that we are returning to the river meets the standards that are set by the state and the Clean Water Act. But a lot of those are for our own operations, like I said, it's a complex living machine, and our operators use that information that we get from those analysis to operate and make adjustments to our treatment process. Oops, sorry. Uh, one thing I wanted to call your attention to, uh, hopefully you've all noticed that we have a nice, uh, new upgraded bridge at the eighty, old eighty-second Drive Bridge. Uh, that was a project to increase the resiliency, the seismic resiliency of that bridge, and I'm proud to say that it now has, is a, has greater seismic resiliency than both the Highway ninety-nine and the I-two-oh-five bridges. So in the event of a Cascadia-type event, um, that bridge, hopefully, more likely, would be available for, uh, travel across the Lower Clackamas River. Uh, one fun fact that you may not know, if you, hopefully, folks have had a chance to see the work that we've done there. We also installed a, a thirty-inch pipeline on the downstream side of that bridge. And, um, for reasons I, that are unclear to me, um, it was originally specced to be ODOT green. Uh, and ODOT green is the green of the bridges that ODOT makes. That kind of really light and bright green. And so as we were constructing it, I noticed that the pipe was this bright green. The rest of the bridge is a, is a kind of a forest green, and we were putting this really bright green pipeline on the side of it. And so we shifted course quickly, painted it a nice forest green, and I hope, I, I think that it looks much better than it would have and blends in nicely with both the bridge and the environment. I want to thank, uh, well, I'll talk a little bit about our Wes Advisory Committee in a minute, but Christopher Baucher, who is a Wes Advisory Committee member and, uh, a citizen representative from Gladstone, um, was very instrumental in helping us with the outreach in that project. So thank you to Christopher. Uh, like the folks in Gladstone Public Works, we're always, every day, uh, out in our collection system, maintaining our pipes, cleaning our pipes, uh, and our pump stations. Just want to let you know that that is still, uh, going on. One thing I want to call your attention to is that picture in the lower right. Uh, that is a snake, uh, poking its head through one of our pipes, and we caught that on one of our, uh, television cameras that we sent through the pipes to check their conditions. Um, I'm going to be talking about inflow and infiltration next, uh, and just imagine if a snake can get its head, uh, in one of our pipes, water can certainly find its way in there as well. So just a, a big picture look at our collection system. Uh, this roughly corresponds with our, the map that I showed you of our service area in the industrial, or in the, uh, urbanized area of Clackamas County. The red, uh, lines are projects that we have in our capital plan, uh, in the next five years to work on as far as our own collection system. We completed a master plan project about a year ago, uh, looking at what we needed to do in our collection system. And what we found is that, over the course of the next twenty years, we need to make really significant reductions, uh, up to sixty-five percent of the amount of inflow and infiltration that reaches our treatment plant. So it's, it's a bit of a, uh, truism that it all, it makes sense to reduce the amount of inflow into our collection systems rather than building treatment capacity where you have to pay people, you have to buy chemicals, you have to have electricity, and you have to build infrastructure to treat what is essentially rainwater and groundwater that gets into our, our, our pipes. So these are the projects that we've, uh, identified broadly. This is a map that shows the basins that, uh, we've identified and, and the cities themselves have identified that need to be focused on in order to reduce that inflow and infiltration into our system. And again, um, what we've calculated, you're going to hear a lot more about this in the next months and year. We want to support the cities. We're going to do our own, uh, inflow and infiltration work, and we want to make sure that we support the cities to meet a pretty ambitious goal for inflow and infiltration reduction to collectively save all of our ratepayers and citizens, um, over a hundred million dollars. Uh, just to give you a little visual of what this looks like, uh, on the left, you can see kind of a cartoon of, you know, a downs, a roof drain connection that gets into our sewer system or in some cases even, um, uh, catch basins in streets that are plumbed into the sewer system rather than stormwater system, and then the, the cracks in the separated joints and things that allow groundwater to enter the system. Uh, the pictures on the right are defective pipes. One in, in the top is a, is a broken pipe, uh, that's obviously allowing a lot of, uh, groundwater to enter that system. And the one on the lower right is a defective, um, it looks like a clay pipe, which would be an old, very old pipe, uh, with a bad joint. So one of the things, uh, another thing I wanted to talk about tonight is our partnering, uh, with Gladstone. I'm, I'm really proud to say that Gladstone, uh, Public Works and Wes Engineering Staff are partnering on really important work in the, in the sewer collection system, uh, to identify those sources of I and I and develop a plan to rehabilitate the leaky areas of our systems. The other thing I wanted to mention, uh, these pictures are of the smoke testing that Gladstone conducted, uh, really looking, putting smoke into the sanitary sewer system and seeing where it comes out. And you can see, uh, the upper right, uh, that's a, a roof drain that's connected to the sanitary sewer system that really should not be. Um, and you have some, uh, street catch basins and other types of things as well. So, uh, finding those areas, studying them, analyzing what needs to get done, uh, and then fixing the problem is what we're working on together, very thankfully. The other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, we did establish, I think, last year, the Good Neighbor Agreement with both Gladstone and Oregon City, uh, that allows Wes to, uh, help fund, um, projects in Gladstone that will enhance the community. And I'm told that we're going to have a project ready, uh, this year. So, uh, very happy to support, uh, Gladstone in that capacity as well. As far as financials, just wanted to go through about sixty-four percent of rate dollars go to operations and maintenance, which is what you might expect, uh, seventeen percent to infrastructure financing. We have a two-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar, uh, five-year capital improvement plan. And so that obviously takes resources, uh, to fund. And then, uh, about nineteen percent goes, and this is not for Gladstone actually, because Gladstone does not, uh, fund those, uh, debt payments. So apologize for that. Uh, as far as Gladstone goes, uh, over the last five years, we have averaged, uh, four and a half percent rate increases, uh, which, given the circumstances, we think is, you know, fairly reasonable and predictable, and we have, uh, constructed a financial plan and a capital improvement plan to keep those rates, uh, reasonable and predictable for the community. And for, uh, the households in Gladstone, for the ability to have the wastewater treated at our, at our, either Tri-City or Kellogg Wastewater Treatment Plants, that costs a household twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents per month, which is extremely competitive, uh, regionally. Uh, quickly, I wanted to, I'll mention our rules and regulations update. So, um, basically what we are doing is taking all of our rules and regulations that have been kind of cobbled together over many decades now, um, and we're in some cases inconsistent between what was the, you know, the Tri-City Service District versus, uh, the Clackamas County Service District number one, which were, um, consolidated into one entity, and revising those. And so we're, that's a, a rules and standard. It's everything from what a developer will need to do in order to meet our standards to, uh, the materials that we use for construction, um, soup to nuts. And so we're, we're working hard on that. There's a pretty robust public process, uh, and we're looking, uh, to being able to implement that in July. One interesting thing about that that we found is, uh, I'm, I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, SDC's, System Development Charges. When a, a developer builds a home or a subdivision, um, there's a charge, whether it's for streets or parks or water, uh, there's also a wastewater charge. And basically, that charge needs to, uh, reflect the impact of that development on the treatment works so that we can build the capacity or, or have the capacity to, to accommodate that additional growth. One, we looked really hard at this, and what we found is, and right now that, that price is seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. But what we found is that a house is not a house is not a house. When we look at water use, which is a pretty good indication of, you know, what's going in and what's going out, and ultimately to our treatment plant, we found a very strong correlation between the square footage of a home and the amount of water that they use, and therefore the amount of, uh, tr- treatment capacity that they would require. And so we're proposing a tiered system where we would have that seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-dollar EDU, but we would, we would scale that, uh, depending upon the size of the home. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we're also proposing for, um, uh, ADUs, I'm just blanking on the term of R for ADUs, but access, oh, accessory dwelling units. Uh, so the tiny, the little houses in, in the backyard kind of thing, uh, sixty percent of one EDU. So we would charge for an ADU, we would charge sixty percent of that seven thousand six, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. This is a unique approach. Uh, I, I like it, and I think more and other utilities will probably move in this direction. Uh, just in the interest of time, I'm going to skip this one. We're doing a lot of great stuff out in the watershed, but I won't, uh, go in detail on that. Uh, this is our third year of our partnership with SOLV, and we call it our Summer Waterways Cleanup, uh, Events. We've done events at High Rocks, and we will probably do more. We've collected thousands of pounds of trash along our local waterways that would otherwise potentially end up in our local waterways. So, we're very proud about that, and we're going to continue that partnership, hopefully, well into the future. One quick thing on workforce, we're always looking for folks to come and work in our industry. And as part of that digester project at our Tri-City facility, we partnered with both the engineer Jacobs Engineering, or used to be CH2M Hill, and our contractor JW Fowler. All of us have interest in bringing people into our various industries. And so, we partnered with the Clackamas Academy for Industrial Sciences to bring them in on the construction and design and operation of that digest, that digester project. And so, it was a really, it was an opportunity for them to come in and get some real-world understanding of what we do and how it's done. And they actually did some problems and did some work around that, which was really cool. And so, we're always looking for opportunities to partner with the community and to prepare that future workforce. I just wanted to acknowledge our advisory committee and our commissioners, as always. Like I said, Christopher Baucher is the citizen representative from Gladstone that's on our West 21-member now advisory committee, and Mayor Tammy Stempel is the elected representative. So, thank you for your work there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and especially for those folks that are new. I would like to extend an offer to come take a tour. If you want to tour Kellogg or Tri-City or any manner of things, we're happy to have you.
Thank you. I took a tour there. It is amazing. There is so much underground there. I was in shock. So, I highly recommend having a tour. You will be amazed, I promise you. Does anybody have any questions for Greg? Yes?
I have one, Danny.
Yep, Councilor Ripley.
The presentation seemed to be a little bit different than what we had in our council packet, and I was wondering if we could get a copy of that presentation, because I don't really have those graphs that he showed. And graphs are always good.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to send it. Yeah, I thought we sent, I thought we sent the packet or the presentation and the annual report.
That's correct. We do have both of them, Councilor Ripley, and we can make you a copy of the one that you just saw on the screen.
Not perfect. I appreciate that.
Yep. All right, thank you. Do we have any other, Councilor Garlandton?
I just have a quick question. Thank you for the presentation. You use the word reduction a couple of times. What does it look like for the average homeowner to reduce?
I'm sorry, I'm not, reduction for?
Usage of some sort, or?
I think you're talking about the infiltration, reducing the amount of infiltration of pipes?
Oh, right.
Okay.
Okay, so, like I said, we've got over 360 miles of pipe in the ground. We've identified basins. Gladstone has a portion of that where we have excessive inflow and infiltration. We need to partner West and the cities collectively, need to reduce those, that amount of inflow and infiltration pretty significantly. And so, the conversation that's happening at this point at the advisory committee, and that will ultimately go to both the Board of County Commissioners and the city councils, is how can we do that? What the, the current conversation is that Water Environment Services would contribute 33% of the funding or projects within those red basins that we, I showed on the map in order to collectively achieve that goal. And if we do that collectively, we would save, according to our numbers, over $100 million in the next 20 years. So, it's really important that we work together. We think, and I think the city staff would agree, that we have a really good understanding. Gladstone just recently completed a master plan and evaluation of their sewer collection system and understand where those leaky areas are and continue to investigate and figure that out. And so, the next step is, well, now that we understand what the problem is, what the goal is, how can we all work together to achieve it, to, again, save $100 million over 20 years for all of our ratepayers and community members?
Did that answer your question, Councilor Garlandton?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Hartman, did you have a question?
Just a quick question. Thank you so much for the presentation. The tiered residential equivalent dwelling unit, when might something like that begin?
Well, we're shooting for July for adoption of our new rules.
Would, just a curious, and this might be silly, so excuse me. So, if it's like an apartment building, does that go towards that size of an apartment per usage or for that whole building?
So, for an apartment building, we charge 0.8. So, 80% of that, so a single-family home would be one. That's the 7,850, and we would charge 80% of that for apartment units.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Councilor Tracy?
Greg, thank you very much for the presentation. Very much appreciated. I like that tiered system, because as we're looking at struggling with some of the SDCs, the ADUs, especially with the infill projects that we need to get going forward, become cost prohibitive, as you know. If you're building a small ADU, obviously, and paying $40,000 or $50,000 in SDCs, it's not going to work. So, I really appreciate that. Could you, at some point, not, obviously not in this meeting, can we touch base with you about how you guys made some of those adjustments to go forward with that? And then, will you please keep us posted on, on what your committee decides going forward with the rule change? If we're going to go ahead and implement in July, because that's exciting to us. We need to figure out some way of creating some infill. The other question I have for you is, do we know how many of our downspouts are emptying out in the sanitary sewers in Gladstone through the smoke testing? And would that be one of those programs you guys would help us support, getting folks to unhook their downspouts from the sewer?
Yes, I would say you do now. That study was done. So, what we did is, we partnered with Gladstone. We needed to do some work in our, some analysis in our collection system. And so, we, and we knew that Gladstone did as well. And so, we said, well, why don't you come in on this contract with us? And we made some arrangements around that. And so, that information is now known. I mean, the system in Gladstone has now been smoke-tested and cataloged. And so, that, that will be the foundation for future work.
Well, I'm just assuming, so then West would support one of the programs similar to the city of Portland's downspout disconnect programs or some things like that to mitigate the INI?
Well, the conversation right now, and this is, I don't want to get out in front of this too far, but the conversation at our advisory committee, which ultimately will, will rise to the Board of County Commissioners and, and the city commissioners or councils, is, you know, how, how that support would happen. Right now, what's kind of being floated around is that if Gladstone wanted to do a project that the engineers agree, will influence or reduce the amount of that inflow and infiltration. In some cases, that's going to be more studies. In other cases, it's going to be construction projects that West would form, would fund a portion of that project. What portion, you know, and, and the amount right now is that, fancied about is 33%. So, we think we can do that. We think it's a wise investment. Again, the, the long goal here is that we agree that we all need to contribute to this issue, and that if we do, and we, and we work together and we meet those goals, we can save our ratepayers a whole lot of money. And on the, on the EDU one, I think it's a very elegant solution as well. The, our, our charge is to make sure that what we charge is commensurate with the impact to our system. And having a system where a house is a house, whether it's 4,000 square feet or 800 square feet, is, doesn't reflect that. And we found that with some very smart people at West, that we could make a strong case for that. And yeah, I'd be happy to, and I'll share that information with Jackie. And if you guys have more questions about the methodology or anything like that, I'd be happy to come and talk.
Thanks a lot, Greg. It's appreciated.
And Councilor Tracy, just to provide you an update on Gladstone's piece of the INI, we are now finishing the TV-ing of the pipes, which is videoing our pipes. Then we will take all of that information and provide a report to the city council. I believe we're looking at a couple hundred to 230 incidences of what we have found. And then, like Greg said, we've got to come up with some options on the next step. And that's also going to invoke, involve probably amending our municipal code, because a lot of this will be onerous on the property owners. And so, that's the next piece of this, and that information will be coming to the council.
All right. Do you have any other questions for Greg? Councilor Todd? Nope. Councilor Ripley, any other questions?
I know, I don't have any questions.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the ability to spend some time with you. And we'll get back to you on, on the questions that you have. And I'm happy to come back anytime to talk about sewer.
All right, thank you, Greg. All right, our next presentation is our annual library report from Mitzi Olsen.
Can you please bring Catherine Krieger into the room and allow her to share her screen? It looks like I need to have permission to share the screen.
Are you able to now?
Yeah, thank you. Can you see that?
Yes.
Great. Okay, Mitzi, I can't see you, so you'll just have to let me know when you want me to switch the slide.
I don't think Mitzi's in here anymore or on the panel part.
Oh, dear.
Hold tight. Let's see what happened here.
She might be having trouble with her internet. Oh, there she is.
Okay. First, I want to thank Councilor Alexander for all the support that he provides the library and the Gladstone Library Foundation, and offer our sincere condolences for the death of his mother. So, good evening, Mayor Stempel, councilors, and city administrator Bets. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update concerning the Gladstone Library. I am Mitzi Olsen, Library Director of the Gladstone and Oak Lodge Libraries. Also with us today is Catherine Krieger, Project Manager for the New Gladstone Library. Next slide, please.
Hmm. In a little trouble. Excuse me. There we go. Oh. Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry, Mitzi.
Oh, that's okay.
A little bit different one than the one I thought we had going for us.
Do you want me to share my screen?
Yeah, that'd be great, and while I get this organized.
Do I have the permission to do that?
Hold tight for just a moment.
Okay. Let's see.
Actually, I have it now.
You have it? Okay.
Yeah. I apologize, everyone.
Okay. So, today I'll be sharing information on the library timeline, how the library is doing, and the types of services we have been able to offer during the pandemic. Catherine will then provide an update on the ongoing library project. Next slide, please. As you may recall, the city of Gladstone and Clackamas County entered into an agreement for the county to assume operation of the Gladstone Library beginning December 2019 and to build a new library in Gladstone. I'm not going to lie, it's been a tough year for the library. We had just combined and started sharing staff between the two locations when we had to close the buildings to the public due to the pandemic. The library statistics that I'm sharing today reflect the impact of that closure. The statistics represent the entire 1920 fiscal year before and after the merge and are being compared to the prior fiscal year of 1819. As you, as would be expected, all the statistics fell except for the eBooks and the e-audio book checkouts. We were able to divert some of our book budget funds to purchase additional electronic resources to help meet the demand of our patrons. Next slide, please. As we progressed through the pandemic, we continued to look for ways to reduce the impact our closure has had on patrons and to provide additional core services. Compared to other libraries, we have more closely maintained the hours our patrons can access staff and have removed barriers to services such as offering drop-in curbside service instead of requiring appointments. Our daily curb, our daily drop-in curbside services allows patrons to pick up their holds, choose Lucky Day items on display, request prints or copies, and receive garden seeds. To aid patrons needing computer and internet access, we have purchased laptops and Wi-Fi hotspots for checkout. These quickly became popular, and we are in the process of adding additional units. Patrons can request free prints and copies, and our homebound program has expanded to allow more vulnerable patrons to receive and return library materials by mail at no charge. Fines for overdue materials have been waived, and staff are available by phone and email daily for assistance. Reader advisory and book bundles are offered daily. Our summer reading program went virtual, but still provided in-person pickup of prizes. Our seeds for sharing program continues to grow by providing season-specific seeds to our patrons for pickup. Popular programs have continued virtually, including reading groups and storytime. We are currently working with the Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park and the Gladstone Foundation to create a story stroll experience in the park. Our book drops are always open for returns. So, we've done our best during this time, and we feel like we've done a good job of offering an amazing array of services during the pandemic. Going through this experience has made us really appreciate the idea of a new building even more. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Catherine so she can explain where we are in the, the project for the new library.
Thank you, Mitzi. Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and Administrator Schmidt. Thanks, Mitzi, for the introduction. I'm Catherine Krieger, the Project Manager for the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Community Project. You know, the project includes both the Gladstone Library and also a library at Oak Lodge. But tonight, we're going to focus on the Gladstone Library, because I know that's where your interest is. I'm going to talk a little bit about the background of the project, the process and schedule, task force work. The task force has been really incredible on this project. Community engagement, the final master plan, costs and funding, and then next steps. So, the schedule and some of the background, we started work on- So the schedule and some of the background, we started work on this a little over a year ago. So in 19, excuse me, in 2020, most of the work for the master plan occurred in 2020. So it was a very busy year. And in spite of COVID, we were able to keep the project moving. And honestly, there are some aspects of Zoom which are positive, and I think it made it a little bit easier for people to get to meetings, at least the task force meetings, and we were able to move on schedule. So this is a schedule we put together over a year ago. We've gone through a technical investigation on the site, needs assessment, and deciding what needed to be in the library alternatives. We looked at three alternatives for Gladstone Library. We looked at a preferred alternative and then also did some refinement on it. Right now, we're in design. We're just beginning. We're on the cusp of design and engineering, and we will be moving into that as soon as we get a contract amended for our consultants and then moving through design and engineering. And then we expect construction to begin in 2022. We have a couple of agreements. We have a couple of milestones that are part of an agreement with Gladstone, and that one is to have construction documents complete by November 30th of this year. And then the other one is to begin construction in the spring of 2022. I know some of you are familiar with this, but I know we also have some new council members, so I want to make sure we have a broad overview. And feel free to interrupt me if you have questions. So we have a task force that did a lot of work, as I mentioned. They created community values, which included some things like sustainability, equal access for all, and that really became the foundation of the work. They also helped select the design team. There were two members of the task force on the selection committee. They approved the public participation plan, and we had promised a robust participation, public participation. And then after a much community engagement, determined the spaces for the libraries. They also participated in a design workshop. You can see here, this was at the Gladstone Center for Children and Families, where each table had cutouts of various program elements that they had defined in a previous phase and then tried to fit it all on the site. So that was really a fun, a fun activity, and it really drove the design alternatives. And then the task force unanimously approved their preferred design alternative. It really was not controversial, and I think it was a common understanding of what people felt was the best alternative for Gladstone to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners. So we held three public meetings. We had a public open house and a survey, the design workshops I mentioned. And then because of COVID, that was one of the things that suffered, was our broader outreach to the community. And so we needed to do all of our outreach online, and that didn't reach as many people as we had hoped. We also did focus groups through the Spanish-speaking community. That was also held at the Gladstone Center for Family and Children and Families. And we met also with underrepresented communities there. And also, we held a very interesting group, meeting with the board, the teens, what is it called? Mitzi, the teen committee, board, what is it called? Mitzi?
Teen Advisory.
What?
Teen Advisory Group.
Teen Advisory Group. Thank you. That was really one of our more successful focus groups, and we learned a lot about some of the things that the teens were hoping for in the library, such as really wanting to feel separate from others in the, in the library, not too close to the other adults, not too close to the kids, things like that. So I'm going to show you the design now. At least the master plan. It's where we are with the project right now. So you know where the location is. It's, it's on Portland Avenue, which is your main street, and then Dartmouth, which is the primary access to Gladstone. And so this is a really important intersection, as you know, and the library will play a significant role for the civic identity of Gladstone. The site is 9,000 square feet. The building is 6,000 square feet. So the building takes up most of the property, and it also, it's one of the challenges and also one of the things that makes the library very unique, just having that prominent location on the corner. So I'm showing you the approved master plan. I think I forgot to mention the master plan was approved a couple of weeks ago by the Board of County Commissioners, so we're moving forward with this plan. So the, this is what came out of the, the design workshops, was the importance of having an entry on that prominent corner. And then also having, having active uses, you know, where you have transparency in the, in the window wall towards the study in the teen area or some activity. And, and then the courtyard really grew in significance in that workshop and how important just nature is and providing a unique element in the building and also providing light into the collection and the children's room and all the various rooms in the, in the library. So, so the corner entry was really important. As I mentioned, the corner and the building really supports that civic identity and that one of the other, one of the other features that was very important to the task force and the community was the ability for this meeting room to expand into the children's room. So this is a sliding wall, and actually, the children can expand in the meeting room. The meeting room can expand into the children's room if necessary. And it also has a private entry. And then the service areas are collected together along East Dartmouth Street. I think those are the main highlights of the, the design. These are some perspectives that our design team put together. They are, don't take them too seriously. I mean, they show where all the parts and pieces are, but we still have a lot of work to do to think about how the building reflects the identity of Gladstone. And we had a couple of good meetings about that near the end of the master planning and about how important wood is and potentially art is to really illustrate Gladstone and, and its importance to the community. This is on the service side of Dartmouth Avenue. This is a illustration of, you can see the courtyard here, how it lets light into the library. And there's also a clear story up here, which adds light. We do have in our budget some mass, use for mass timber. I know that's what you used. There's some mass timber in your civic building that you just finished. So we're taking your lead and, and hope to have that also in the library, because it really provides that rich, warm feel inside of a library. So these are the preliminary costs and funding. These are costs that maybe you've seen before. The library is about $5 million with an estimated total for the two libraries at 17 million. These two projects, Oak Lodge and Gladstone, are being considered together and the various funding sources that we have to build it. The Clackamas County Board of Commissioners have made a commitment to you to build this library and anticipate funding the gap, which is about 8.3, I'm going to talk about this a little bit more in a minute, 8.3 million would be funded by Clackamas County bond. No vote would be required for that bond. And so that's a commitment that they have made to you. I do want to say that since the end of the master planning, one of my jobs has been to really be working through what the total project cost is, making sure I really understand all of the permitting, putting together a new scope of work for Opsys, our design team, and all of their professional staff. And we're finding that the, the cost for the project is higher, a little bit higher than we thought. And the Gladstone Library is up about $1 million, and the Oak Lodge Library is up about $2 million. Most of that is because of the soft costs or indirect costs that we had estimated in the master plan were at 30%. And partly because, anyway, they're coming up higher and they're, the, the issue with the Gladstone Library is that there's no economy of scale. It's, it's, you know, the small house versus the big house. You know, you still have to have a front door. You need to have a bathroom, you know. So that's one of the reasons that we're up a little bit on the Gladstone Library. We're having a task force meeting next week to talk about that. I don't anticipate any changes needed to the Gladstone building because of the commitment the commissioners have made to you to, to build the, to build the building. And I can answer more questions on that if you have them. Next steps, we are going to have a task force meeting next week, as I mentioned. We're going to continue community engagement. The goal here is to get the Opsys contract to our Board of County Commissioners for approval. Scheduled right now, we're going to do two meetings, a policy session, and then a business meeting. So it'd be March 2nd, and then two weeks after that for approval. So the, the idea is to begin schematic design in the middle of March. We also want to solicit for a general contractor for pre-construction services to help us truth our project costs, making sure, wanting them to be involved in the process. We don't want any surprises at the end of the project when it, so this is in lieu of a hard bid contract. It would be a CMGC, Construction Manager, General Contractor, a design, delivery, project delivery that we'd be proposing for this project. And then after, after the spring, we would move into design development, construction documents, and go through any land use and building permit. This bidding here refers to bidding of all of the subcontractors that would go out and with construction estimated to begin next spring, as I mentioned earlier. So that's, that's what I've got. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'm sure Mitzi does, too.
I have a question, a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
Hi. Thank you so much for this presentation. As someone that's new, I appreciate all the information. Um, can you, can you clarify for me what underrepresented communities you've been in touch with and what you kind of gathered from them?
Yeah, sure. The, the primary group, well, there was, we met with the teen group that I mentioned. That's not somebody, that's not a group that maybe people would meet with ordinarily with, for projects. We also met with the high school group at the Gladstone High School, but primarily it hit, we have focused on the Spanish-speaking community and, and other, other communities of color. Now, we weren't the main, we were most successful with the Spanish-speaking community. And what we learned is, and you know, these were small focus groups, so they don't represent everybody, but we did learn some important things that people were interested in places for the kids, you know? That was a big highlight. Another one was technology was not so important. You know, everybody was thinking, oh, you could, you know, have a room to afford to do various electronic games, and that was really, the parents were like, no. That's not what the kids need. So I think those were the two big takeaways for the library.
Awesome. Thank you. Are you, are you working with any, like, cultural partners in the area at all?
For example?
Like, if there's any other, like, cultural organizations that can provide, I mean, maybe this is down the road, like, content and ability to make sure we're showcasing, you know, different lenses for people.
I am not aware of any. Mitzi, are you?
I'm not. I thought that there was one Hispanic group that we were working with, but I do not recall the name.
Yeah. Yeah, and the, our, just so you know, our, our link through the, for the Spanish-speaking community was through the Gladstone Center for Children and Families. So that was our link there. We did try to reach out to the Russian community, and we're really just not successful. It's something that takes a lot of time to build up those partnerships, and it, and we know it's something we need to do more of. So, you know, that it's not always starting from scratch.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know that there's a lot of Spanish-speaking people who are members of the library and, and engage in the programs that Mitzi works on.
Awesome. Thank you. Just one more question about the residents that are right behind the library. Is there a plan to notify them of, like, timeline of construction?
Yeah, that's a good point. We will definitely do a lot of outreach when it's, when it's time, because we know that construction, even though everybody's waiting for the library, the construction piece can be very disruptive.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Since I don't see everybody up there, I'm just going to call on you each individually. Counselor Ripley, did you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
No questions. Thank you, mayor.
Counselor Todd?
No questions. Thank you.
And Counselor Garland.
No questions, but thank you a lot for that presentation. It was really good and very informative. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very, very much. As always, I wish that we could cut the timeline in half so we could get this library built as soon as possible. And I'm sure that you all are doing everything that you can to accommodate that. So thank you very much. And Mitzi, you're a champion.
Thank you.
It's been a tough road, very long, long road. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our last presentation is Clackamas Community College Report by Board Member Dave Hunt.
Hello. Thanks for the opportunity to have me. And if you can give me a screen sharing capability, I'll go through. Actually, do you have, do you have the PowerPoint queued up? That may be simpler if you just go through it.
I do not, but I just made you co-host, so you should be able to share your screen now.
Okay, great. Well, thank, thanks so much for the opportunity to be here. This year is Clackamas Community College's 55th anniversary. Some of you, maybe all of you, know that CCC actually started at Gladstone High School in 1966. It was a brand-new Gladstone High School, and that year, there were also 693 part-time CCC students being taught at Gladstone. So by, by contrast, today, we now have over 25,000 full and part-time students. So it's been a pretty, pretty dramatic time of growth. But those roots and, and the whole, the whole process for the first two years was, was right at Gladstone. We, I have the privilege of serving on the board. We, I have the privilege of serving on the board, representing the Gladstone area. And really appreciate the, the honor of doing so. I'm just going back, finding the PowerPoint. I know I have it right here. There it is. Okay. So obviously, this has been just a crazy year of transition. That's been true for the city. As we just heard, it's been true for, for the library and everybody else. I, I'm not sure we've ever, you know, I look at past recessions, I'm not sure we've ever seen the kind of, the kind of transition that we've seen at Clackamas this year. Why am I not seeing you present? Thank you. We've really just, I mean, in addition to things directly at the college, obviously, we're operating in an environment that isn't directly related to the college. But I mean, issues around COVID have had a direct impact to the college. Issues around fire as, as the CCC campus in Oregon City became an emergency shelter for the community and then ultimately a staging area for firefighters. Issues around racial justice, racial injustice, issues around the election. We've definitely seen the impacts of those on our, on our college and our students. This slide, I think, shows one of the best examples of the transition we've had to go through. Because we had some online courses or ones that were hybrid, part in, in class, part online before the pandemic hit. But you can see we had a hundred and seventy-three of those classes pre-pandemic. And then we had to ramp that up to nine hundred and thirteen online and hybrid courses once the pandemic hit. And the exact same thing has happened. We do continue some in-person courses. If you think about the kind of course offerings we have, where you have healthcare courses, at least a portion of that has to be in person. Automotive technology, welding, some of the, the science classes have to be in person. And so we've done a pretty good job at trying to adapt and have really had good success, knock on wood, with avoiding COVID outbreaks. Most of COVID exposure for, for faculty, staff and students almost universally has been, people connected to the college have caught COVID, but they were not on campus before during the time that they were, that they, they had the, the disease. So we've been, we've been really fortunate and we plan to continue to, to make sure that students have access to the kind of courses that they, they need. A lot of innovation by our faculty and staff, just really trying to adapt on the dime to make things accessible for students. That's everything with the way they actually do instruction to, actually, on the next slide, I'll hit a couple more of those. This, this gives you a good flavor. It's a student snapshot of CCC students during the pandemic. Just to give you a flavor of, you know, our, our community has been hard hit overall. But the, the student body at Clackamas, and I think this is pretty universally true of community colleges, has been even harder hit. Much, even a more disproportionate impact in terms of homelessness or being, or being home insecure, direct loss of jobs or at least reduce hours and pay. And, and often many of them living in situations where an online learning environment is just not successful, which is why it's, we have striven so much to have some of those online learning, excuse me, some of those in-person learning possibilities to supplement, to supplement the online. Really, really challenging, really challenging student body. Our, our student services folks have done an amazing job adapting services for students during the pandemic. I think some of you know, we have, depending on which ranking you're looking at, either the first or second best veteran center in the whole country, among community colleges. Clackamas really has, has made a huge investment over the last fifteen years in, in access to education for veterans. We took half the dollars that we got from the Federal Cares Act and gave them direct payments to students. So that made a huge difference in the, in the, the lives of those students. Moving a lot of onboarding online, really dramatically changing our whole admission process and advising process to give students much greater access to, to those services online. Some, we gave out a lot of Chromebooks and laptops to, to students who had no access. We've set up Wi-Fi hubs at the campuses. So, so students that don't have Wi-Fi at home can actually come on campus and access that. Weekly food box distribution, we have a cougar cave that before the pandemic was doing that more in person, where students could come in. We've moved to, to food boxes that, that keep the students out of that space, but they can still pick up that food. Just a dramatic number of, of adaptations that have been made to, to keep students connected and learning. We did, actually, one of the cool things I, I think we may actually replicate again is drive-through graduation. It took about four times as long as the normal graduation. But the individualized attention on those students was actually quite a bit greater to give them their moment in the sun and, and cheering. So most, most of these things in the pandemic, I'm sure you'll agree, will not replicate again. That may be one that we, we, we actually do. One of the best things and probably full, underappreciated things about Clackamas is how much high school connections our students have. A huge percentage of our students are current high school students that are taking courses that are offered through the high school. Some of those are courses taught by, say, Gladstone High School teachers that have already been pre-cleared so they can get college credit through CCC. Some of those are CCC instructors that when we have face-to-face teaching, actually come into Gladstone High School and teach those courses. It is just a dramatic impact across our county in terms of the number of students who are participating in that. And in terms of the number of credits that they are, are able to earn. You can see in that second bullet there, the Advanced College Credit, that's ACC. Advanced College Credit students last year earned over twenty-nine thousand credits. I know my own daughter, when she graduated from GHS in twenty-seventeen, she came away with eighty-five credits. So to walk into the University of Oregon on day one and have eighty-five credits made a huge impact in terms of, well, financially, obviously, it made an impact on her ability to just move ahead and take more advanced courses. It even had the benefit in terms of getting tickets to Austin Stadium because the first-year students go into a lottery. And you often, if you're a first-year student, don't get the pick for the tickets. She was choosing as a, as a third-term sophomore. And so got tickets to every duck game she wanted to go to. So that, that service that CCC provides to students at GHS and across our county just makes a huge, huge impact. It was really beneficial to those students. Our foundation has really been on fire during this pandemic. In a normal year, we award between five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars in scholarships every year, which is a big number. But this year, we ramped that up and gave over seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars in scholarships. A lot of students were really in need. And I think it's one of the things to, to keep in mind for, for students of all ages in Gladstone that, that are thinking about higher ed. You may look at the price and realize, well, I can't, I can't afford that price. There is so much, you know, there's federal financial aid that's available. There is direct CCC scholarships that are available. Some are need-based, some are merit-based. There really are lots of opportunities for students to, to get access to an education. So I would really encourage you to, to encourage our mutual constituents to, to check that out and not be scared off by sticker shock. I mentioned briefly the wildfires. That was something that obviously we could not prepare for. But once those hit, I believe first Malala High School was set up as the first emergency shelter before the fires came in so fast and, and the shelter was moved to the Oregon City Campus of CCC. And that was, you know, it was just a menagerie of, of people on cots in the gym, of people with trailers and trucks and tents all around campus. It was, it was a great resource. We were happy to share with the community. And then frankly, when the fire and smoke kept coming in, that was evacuated. And we became base camp then, as you can see in the, in this picture on the left here, for, for fire personnel from across the, the whole region that were coming in to fight those fires. So that was a, that was a great experience for them. I think a silver lining, and it's a really tragic set of wildfires. So looking ahead, I think we are really optimistic about how we're positioned. And you know, not only do students continue to get a great education today, but we've got a lot of great opportunities looking ahead. That's our president, Tim Cook, in the center photo there with the, the bow tie. We, Tim is two and a half years into his tenure at Clackamas. Those of you who knew Dr. Joanne Truesdale, knew that Tim had a really high bar to meet because Joanne was a rock star, college president, really recognized statewide and nationally. Tim is just another rock star and just doing a fabulous job. He's an OCHS graduate, Oregon City High School graduate. So he was born and raised here. His, his parents still live in Clackamas County. And, and it's been a great transition for us to be under his leadership. One of the cool things that we're just starting off, you probably haven't heard much about is, some of you may be familiar with Clackamas Volunteers in Medicine. It's a health clinic for underserved and uninsured individuals and families that operates on Malala Avenue in Oregon City. They are nearing the place where they've had to, they're going to hit the end of their lease and have had to relocate. They're going to have to relocate next year. So we've entered into a partnership with, with CBIM and CCC to be able to give them part of one of our older buildings. And there's going to be, have to be a complete renovation to adapt it. But it's just going to be a great opportunity, especially since CCC has really good public transportation. It's a public transportation hub, so lots of good access for people who are in need of healthcare. And frankly, lots of good workforce opportunities with our healthcare students. So we're really excited about that partnership that will have both, both a healthcare benefit and an educational benefit as well. Our facilities are, are just one of the best in the state right now. And the credit really goes to the voters for passing the bond in, in twenty-fourteen. You'll probably recall, we had a long process leading up to the bond. A lot of community engagement and involvement and advice, listening to folks. I remember one of our best attended listening sessions was at the, at the Gladstone Center for Children and Families. Just huge turnout there and across the county with people weighing in about what they, what their hopes and dreams were for the college, which then resulted in the twenty-fourteen bond. And the impact of that, in fact, I'll go back to this slide because the, the building on the left there is the, the new Health Professions Building at the Harmony Campus. The, that opened two years ago, now I guess it's been three years ago now. The middle building is the new extension. We basically added on, took an existing building and built a whole new wing onto it that is a whole new science center, adding on all kinds of additional lab capacity. And then the building on the right, which I can't see because of my view, oh, the building on the right is our Industrial Technology Center, which is basically a manufacturing facility on the Oregon City Campus. If you think about our geographic location here, we are just perfectly situated. The Gladstone community is perfectly situated, pretty much right in between the Harmony Campus and the Oregon City Campus. So I think Gladstone residents are probably as, as well benef, you know, able to take it as, as much advantage as any students across the county of, of these great new buildings. There were other lower-profile things. I won't go through all these. But the, but the three on the previous slide plus the, let's see, there was one other. Oh, the automotive expansion. That was within a current building, but when we moved out our manufacturing into a brand-new building, it freed up a whole bunch of space for an additional automotive program expansion. So we really ended up, they really ended up with the state-of-the-art facility as well for, for a variety of automotive programs. So we are just so well situated and, and these, you know, we didn't plan back when the bond was on the ballot that we were going to have to do social distancing. That wasn't a thing back then, obviously. But without these buildings, we wouldn't have been able to offer nearly as many face-to-face courses as we have during the pandemic. Because we have a much larger automotive center that actually allows students to be spaced out, a much larger manufacturing facility that allows students to be spaced out. So that, that bond measure, voters get a lot of credit for stepping up on that in twenty-fourteen and giving us capacity that's going to serve us well for decades. This is the last building that will be built onto the bond. It's the Welcome Center and it's just, was just named last week, the Wachino Welcome Center. It's named after one of the chiefs of the Clackamas Tribe. And it's going to be, as you pull into the Oregon City Campus, one of the challenges of that campus was there was really no center point of the campus. I think Counselor Ripley is a CCC alum and he would probably attest that when you go on the Oregon City Campus previously, you really didn't know where to go because there were, there was no center point. This is going to be the center point. And all the student services will be captured in one building. So it will really be a, a place to go, whether you're looking for advising, counseling, financial aid, cultural services, veteran services, whatever, maybe they're all going to be in that one building. So we're excited about that. It's still under construction. But, but things are going well on that. Actually, in fact, that's a construction slide right there. So getting there, this is probably about three weeks ago, getting there slowly but surely. A few other things I would just mention, looking ahead. I mean, these are definitely the centerpiece themes we are focusing on. We are all about being student-centered. In fact, I should mention, the president of our student body this year is a GHS alum, Lainey Sticka. Lainey, I think, was class of twenty-eighteen-ish and is doing a great job as a student government president and has really engaged a lot of students in helping hold us accountable for remaining student-centered. We want to be innovated, we want to be innovative. We want to maintain an equity lens that really does have, place a high priority on diversity, equity, inclusion. And really remind people that, that CCC is the best-kept secret, I think, in terms of community colleges across the state. I'd say a couple more things. Guided Pathways is one of our core initiatives right now that is really all about helping students navigate. I, I think in the past, too often, students were just kind of allowed to flounder, to pick their courses without much of a specific goal in mind. We're really trying to help students sit down and design individually. Different students have different paths, but help them design a path that will go, where they can see the path from A to B to C to D to E to F to completion, to meeting their goal, without wasting a lot of courses that they didn't need to take, doing so in an expeditious and a successful way. And when you combine that with DEI, we really want to, to, to focus and we've invested a lot of, of time and resources in creating not just a DEI plan, but we're now hiring, in fact, we're in the final hiring stages for a new DEI, Chief DEI Officer to, to make sure that, you know, we, we already have a very diverse student body at CCC. But we want to make sure that those students feel included and engaged. We want to make sure that other students who are not part of our campus are, are also engaged and included and, and are, and find success at CCC. The last thing I would say is in terms of budget impacts, this is going to be, you know, our, our budget is basically a third property taxes, a third state funding and a third tuition. And so when state funding is reduced, as it has been in past recessions, the only lever we control is either to make devastating cuts that negatively impact students or to increase tuition, which has a negative impact on students. We have really held the line on tuition. We have the lowest tuition in the whole Portland-Vancouver metro area of any higher ed institution. We have the second-lowest tuition in the whole state of Oregon. That's kind of a badge of honor for us. And we're going to work hard to, to maintain it. But it's going to take getting some increased funding at the state level that goes above and beyond the governor's recommended budget. So I know I'm over time. Madam Mayor, I will, I will stop there and would be happy to take any questions or feedback you may have.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go one by one.
I'm going to go one by one and ask so that I make sure everyone's covered. Counselor Ripley, do you have any questions?
No, all I'll say is the diversity at Clackamas community is more than, than race. I've taken classes with people in their mid-teens to their early seventies. And I left Clackamas to go to Portland State to continue taking my math classes and geology and physics and stuff. But if I could have finished all that at Clackamas Community, I would have done that in a heartbeat. You can't compare Clackamas to any other college out there. It's like, you, when you get on the campus, all the, all the instructors and professors, they're all extremely professional people, but they all want to help every you. It's, it's a huge difference going from a community or university college when the university, they don't really, if you want help, you have to go for the help. But Clackamas, if the teacher saw you struggle and they went to you to make sure you're doing good. But absolutely, I absolutely love the place up there. I think it's a good, good place for anybody to start out their ed- educational experience.
Also Ripley, I want to take you on the road with me. Let's, let's connect after.
We'll do that.
Angeles for CCC.
Yes.
I, I, I would note to your point, Counselor Ripley, the, our graduates last year ranged in age from 16 to 76. So you are so right, we have such a diversity of students.
I did do one class, I did the Death Valley Trip. And that was an absolute blast. That's the most beautiful place I've seen. And it, it's incredible down there, all the different, the geology that we only know is down there, but it was definitely worth my time.
All right, thank you. Counselor Tracy?
No questions. Thank you, Dave, for your presentation. I think it's great. I think one of the things that jumps out at me is the resiliency of the college, you know, of the campus and the college given these times. The other thing too is it's just jarring to see your student snapshot and the challenges that the students were facing at the beginning of this pandemic and then of course, you know, as the year went on. But what I find really impressive about all of it is your can-do attitude and it seems like the school's can-do attitude. And I want to commend that from, from my position. I don't know a lot about Clackamas Community College to be truthful and, and, you know, I went to Portland State. But this is something that I'll be, be able to share with a lot of citizens because I think folk, folks don't focus on Clackamas as much as they do on some of the other institutions around the region. And this tells me that, that there's plenty here for them. So really do appreciate it. There's a lot of information here to, to absorb. But kudos to you and, and the team, the staff, the board and everyone who put this in play and, and obviously to President Tim. This is impressive, thank you.
True, thank you.
Counselor Hartman?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that this is fantastic to hear. I want to say thank you as well to your stance on diversity, equity, inclusion. I think it's fantastic and like Counselor Ripley said, of all ages too. I took a class where I was the, the youngest one and I'm taking another class where I was the oldest one. So it's really fantastic to see support so many different avenues. Is, are there any specific legislation that we should be paying attention to that you might need some of our support? And, you know, with our voice, using our voice for that?
That's, that's a great question, Counselor Hartman. I, I think I'd recognize and I identify two. One, the core budget, the community college support fund. Because we don't get direct funding to CCC from the state that goes into the community college support fund. And then there's a distribution formula that goes out. So we are, we are trying to raise that up to at least flat, you know, including inflation. We think with some of the federal aid that we've got and even a flat budget from the state will be able to maintain those core services. Because we've added on a lot of additional advising and counselors to be able to help, help students better navigate even pre-pandemic. So I think the core funding is one. There's also a bill that is specifically focused on, on, on issues around food insecurity on college campuses, especially community colleges. And with a little bit of state money, there is a whole bunch of federal money that can be leveraged. And so setting up a system to better help students and to better maximize the federal dollars. Those would probably be two I'd identify.
Awesome, thank you again.
Counselor Todd?
I just wanted to say thank you. As far as the incredible opportunity at Gladstone High School for our kids to already get college credits at, I mean, the, the cost savings for myself, for my family, having two kids a year apart. I think both of my kids, they at least had a term done of school. And it was all done at, with their teachers at their high school. It was easy to do and they were readily accepted at all the state colleges. So it's just something that I, I hope, I mean, my kids have been out for 10 and 11 years or so, but I just hope that more families are using that and as a great budgeting tool.
You know, Counselor Todd, one of the biggest challenges we actually face, and I was just talking with Bob Stewart a few weeks ago about this, is students that, like your kids and mine, that are already taking those classes. It's amazing the number of students that don't actually take the next step and pay the $10 of credit. So, you know, Counselor Ripley was probably paying 90 bucks a credit when he was at Clackamas. It's 10 bucks a credit for high school students. Right now, I think we're up to 107 if you're a full-time student. But 10 bucks a credit, if you're taking a, a class through GHS. And yet there are some families, some that can't afford that 10 bucks a credit, some which are just not aware of it. And I think there are others who are thinking, ah, my kid is never going to go to college, so why would I get that? I think we can do more and we're actually talking with Bob Stewart about some, we may actually pilot something in Gladstone that is more of a, an opt-out to those credits instead of the current opt-in that really maximizes. Because there's just so many opportunities to be had, saving big money. And frankly, if you, if you get to graduation at GHS and you already have 15 or 30 or 60 credits, it can just totally change your outlook in terms of what you see as, as your own opportunities. So we, we all need to do a better job of getting the word out about that.
Thank you.
Counselor Garlington?
I would just, I'd like to say that I'm super impressed with your presentation. I'm excited for the kids that, and, and everyone who gets to use any part of Clackamas Community College. I, I hope that more people do use it and I, from, like Counselor Todd, we had children that utilized the few credits that they had. And I will add that for some kids, even that $10 is a struggle. And I hope that you can find a partnership with Gladstone so that that funding is always found, no matter what. Because just that little bit of success, you know, makes a child eager for that next step of success. And that is so important, so important. And, and, you know, good luck to that, really.
Thanks, appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much, Dave. Come back another time and give us more good news. This was a great presentation.
Will do. Thanks for, for having me and thanks for birthing CCC 55 years ago.
Okay, bye. All right, so we did agenda, agenda additions or corrections. We have none, we did the consent agenda, we have no correspondence. So next is the regular agenda. So first, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. And as I stated before, if you did not submit your comments before noon today and you raise your hand to speak, you will not be recognized. Second, as I do before every meeting, I'd like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean that our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal level, the, and state level, and they filter down to the city's comprehensive plan, our city charter, our codes and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and we have to take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking the time to call in and participate. We will have your phones muted and tell it is your time to speak. And if we are unable to mute your phones, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging and I hope all of you can help me do that. So first is item number seven. On our regular agenda, Resolution 1189, Extended Property Tax Exemption with the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone for an additional two years for a total of five for investments by Moses Lake Industries staff.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. You heard some fantastic partnerships that are going on regionally with the city of Gladstone. And this really is another one. This is with the city of Milwaukee and Clackamas County. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what an enterprise zone is first. An enterprise zone is part of a state-initiated tax abatement program that's available to businesses looking to locate or expand in a designated area. In October of 2019, the Gladstone City Council approved a resolution to become part of North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone, which is managed by Clackamas County. And in that zone, the cit-, the county has included city-eligible commercial and industrial zone tax lots on McLaughlin primarily. And eligible businesses in the entire zone include manufacturers, processors, shippers, call centers and other traded sector businesses. Clackamas County manages the program for us. And as part of that, there are standard incentives that a business is eligible to receive. One of those is what's called a three-year property tax abatement. And then there is a five-year property tax abatement exemption. Moses Lake is asking for the five-year property tax exemption, which is why that is coming before you tonight. Moses Lake Industries is located in the city of Milwaukee in their International Way Industrial Business Area. They're a supplier of high-performance, high-purity chemicals to all segments of the semiconductor and flat panel industries. The city of Milwaukee approved this resolution last week. They are excited about Moses Lake Industry expanding on their business and that they have a commitment to add two to three new employees as part of that expansion. The Clackamas County Board of Commissioners will revisit this next week for their approval. And tonight, this is the city of Gladstone in good faith effort as partnership to approve this resolution as well. And so with that, if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, so we're just voting on this simply because we're a part of this group, not because it's in Gladstone.
That is correct.
Um, Counselor Ripley, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, I don't have any questions on this, thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, Ashley. So Jackie, in following this, we're seeing a 10% increase in staff at two to three employees, right? And those employees come in at 150% per cap or average income for the county, correct?
That is correct.
I'm, I'm looking at numbers here and I'm, I'm just trying to understand where the, where the big win is from, for this company on the enterprise. And I mean, they're only abating, what, 18,600, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I, I just, two things. One is I, I'm curious about what their parity is with their other employees on wage. Because wage seems to be kind of like the, the main driver of this, this whole piece that I've read in the staff report. So I guess the question is, what, what are there other folks being paid? If they're in the three-year, they're being paid 150% of Oregon's minimum wage, correct? Which, what are we at, 11 now, nine and a half, 11? Forgive me for not knowing it. Right, so that's 15 bucks an hour, right? 16 bucks an hour. Is that correct? So, so I'm just curious because wage is a big driver here, but it doesn't seem like the benefit matches what they're going to have to put out in salary and load for three additional employees. And then the question I have is where, where is the separation? What, what's the delta between those employees and the other employees by the company?
Yeah, and I don't have the answer for you on that. I can certainly research it if you guys would like me to do that further.
I don't have any opposition, it just doesn't make sense to me. And maybe I'm seeing it differently than somebody else's. If somebody else could explain it to me, it, it just, I'm trying to just find where the real value is for them to be operating in the enterprise zone with the abated taxes if they have this other financial piece tied to it.
So I'm going to ask our city recorder, I believe we have somebody from Clackamas County in the attendees, Cindy, if she's available to join in and possibly answer this question.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilors. Can you hear me okay? Yes. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Jackie. My name is Cindy Moore. I am with Clackamas County Business and Community Services Economic Development Division and have the pleasure of managing the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone. So I appreciate your question, Counselor Tracy. And while I don't have the exact figures on the entire staff of Moses Lake Industries, the, I think that the general understanding is that the benefit to the company is the form of that abatement that they will be receiving on that investment that then allows them to redirect those funds into things like purchasing more equipment or at a future date, bringing on even more, you know, employees to support their growth. So that would, that would be my general response. But as Jackie mentioned, if you need something certainly more specific, we could tap into the company and, and pull that information for you.
I, I don't personally, I mean, I, I just, it, it just, if you just look at it in the staff report, I'm sorry Cindy, it just doesn't, financials, it doesn't make financial sense to me. So I'm trying to figure out where the return on investment is for them on the investment for the, for the other three employees at 150% of Clackamas County's average. But, I mean, like I said, this is just, we're voting because we're one of the close, one of the closer, we're one of the closer communities. I don't have a, an opposition here, it just, it's just not making sense, so.
Certainly, and I can, I certainly appreciate your question. I haven't fielded one like that before, so I appreciate the ask. And that's certainly something that we could ask participants in the program and, and get some more clarity around that. And for future reference, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I've, I've just been involved with a tax abatement process over in Washington County where we're discussing this. It was $80,000 a year. So you certainly can see that at $80,000 a year abated, you can see how onboarding folks at, you know, 150, 150% of the county's average will work. I just don't see it here and I'm not, it's not my business, so I don't know this company and I don't know what the other details are in their books.
Sure, so maybe one thing to consider in comparing it to other programs, either across the state or in different areas in specific industries, is that the investment levels might vary and the depreciation of the equipment and the valuation of the original investment might look different for different projects. And so while the savings in the abatement that we received from the assessor's office was based off of what was submitted by the company for those specific pieces of equipment. And so that may vary as far as a savings goes from one company to another, just solely on the depreciation schedule of the equipment that they're investing in.
Thank you for that, I understand that. I just, it was just at first blush, it just doesn't make financial sense.
Totally understand, of course.
All right, thank you. Counselor Hartman?
Thank you. I, I just had one question or more of a clarification, that Gladstone is not losing any tax income, is that correct?
That is correct.
That is all, thank you.
Counselor Todd?
I have no questions in regards to this.
Counselor Garlington?
I, I have no further questions.
All right, would someone like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion. Um, I make a motion to approve Resolution 1189, approval of a written agreement with the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone sponsored to extend property tax exemption for an additional two years for a total of five consecutive years for investments by Moses Lake Industries Incorporated.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman, seconded by Counselor Garlington. Do we have any further discussion? Do we have any further discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, thank you. Next item is number eight, Appointments to the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and the Senior Center Advisory Board. We have two to appoint to planning, five on parks and rec, and four on senior center. Staff, how do we want to do this?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we're going to do a continuation of the process that we did at the last meeting. Our city recorder will put up the spreadsheet and just ask each of you to make your choices.
All right. Okay, Tammy.
Can you all see the screen?
Yes.
I believe we're starting with the Planning Commission. And we will start, we're looking for two positions to be filled. So we'll start with Counsel Garland.
Tom Mercero and Bill Osborne.
Counselor Todd.
Tom Mercero and Andrew Labonte, please.
Counselor Hartman.
Andrew Labonte and Nathan Page.
Counselor Tracy.
Tom Mercero and Andrew Labonte.
Counselor Ripley.
And Mercero and Labonte.
Mayor Stimple.
Tom Mercero and Bill Osborne.
It appears by the vote that Tom Mercero and Andrew Labonte will be appointed to the Planning Commission.
All right.
Next, we have Park and Recreation Board. We have six applications for five positions.
I have a quick question. I noticed that on here we have that terms expire at different times. Do we need to clarify by any chance, like, that we want this person for this term? Or how does that work?
One of the criteria that we used for the budget and the audit, because we had staggered positions, is that whoever got the most votes received the four-year terms, and then the least after that would be for the remaining terms. If that's some consistent criteria that you would like to apply here, then we certainly could as well.
That's how we've been doing it for many years, and it seems to have worked out fine. If anybody has any concerns about that.
I think that makes a lot more sense and sort of, you know, streamlines it a little bit.
All right, Tammy, go ahead.
Okay, Counsel Tracy.
Parks and Rec, I have Olivia Edwards, Ellen Faber, David Michael, Nancy Turner, and Stephanie Phipps.
Counselor Ripley.
Edwards, Faber, Michael, Phillips, and Turner.
Counselor Hartman.
I have Stephanie Joy Phipps, Nancy Turner, Olivia Edwards, Ellen Faber, and David Michael.
Counselor Todd.
I have Olivia Edwards, Ellen Faber, David Michael, Stephanie Phipps, and Nancy Turner, please.
Counselor Garland.
I have Olivia Edwards. Mine aren't in the same order as yours. I'm sorry. David Michael, Bill Osborne, Stephanie Phipps, and Nancy Turner.
Mayor Stimple.
I had, again, I don't have it in the same order. Ellen Faber, David Michael, Stephanie Joy Phipps, Nancy Turner, and Bill Osborne.
Okay. Okay.
So I guess it won't streamline. Because there's three different dates, right?
One, two, three. So we've got three people that have.
So the three with the most, three with the most votes are Mr. Michael, Phipps, and Turner.
Okay.
Yep, so that's those.
Those will, terms will go through 2024. And then I guess the council will have, or will have to determine who will be appointed between Edwards and Faber for term to expire 2023 and term to expire 2022.
Okay, so I guess clear the board, and we'll just vote on those two.
I will just add an extra vote. I will go down the line, and so we are between Edwards and Faber, and we'll start with 2023.
Yep, who wants 2023?
Okay. Counselor Garland.
Edwards.
Okay, hold tight. I'm gonna. Oops. Counselor Todd.
Trying to look here.
Who wanted that? I'll say Faber.
Counselor Hartman.
Edwards.
Counselor Tracy.
Sorry, I'll go with Faber.
Counselor Ripley.
Just to keep things amusing, I'm going to go with Faber also.
And Mayor Stimple.
Faber.
Okay, it appears Faber will be 2023, and Edwards will be 2022.
All right, thank you.
Senior Center Advisory Board, five applications for four positions. The first three will be through 2024, and the one with the least amount of votes will be through 2023. We'll start, Mayor Stimple.
Simona Gergesen, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Gergesen? Evelyn Johansson, Sylvia Kellner, and Josie Whitaker.
Counselor Ripley.
Faber, Johansson, Kellner, and Whitaker.
Hold tight. Faber, I'm sorry, please say that again.
Johansson, Kellner, and Whitaker.
Thank you. Counselor Tracy.
I have Simona, Evelyn, so yeah, Gergensen, Evelyn, and Sylvia, and Josie.
Counselor Hartman.
I had Ellen Faber, Simona Gergesen, Sylvia Kellner, and Evelyn Johansson.
Counselor Todd.
Gergesen, Johansson, Kellner, and Whitaker, please.
Counselor Garland.
Gergesen, Johansson, Kellner, and Whitaker.
Okay. Johansson and Kellner.
And Gergesen will have the three.
Yep.
Okay. And then Whitaker will have the 2023.
Correct.
Okay. Do you need anything else from us on this?
No, but I do want to let you know, one, congratulations. Two, tomorrow we will send out the invitation to all of our volunteers for the annual volunteer orientation, which will be on February 17th virtually. So thank you very much.
All right, item number nine is the 2021-2023 Budget Calendar. Staff?
Yes, look at that. It's time for us to put together our biennium budget for 2021-2023. The first step in the process is for the city council to accept the budget calendar. And we would also like you to recognize that you will have an orientation meeting, Budget 101, the role of the Budget Committee, which will be March 29th before we begin our process. So really, all the council needs to do is accept the budget calendar.
Do we have any questions? Counsel Ripley.
I don't have any questions.
Counsel Tracy.
No questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Hartman.
Questions, thank you.
Counselor Todd.
No questions, thanks.
Counsel Garland.
No questions, thank you.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to accept the 21, 2021 through 2023 Budget Calendar.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counsel Ripley and seconded by Counsel Tracy. Do we have any further discussion, questions, or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, thank you. All right, do we have any business carried forward?
Just real quickly, I wanted to extend gratitude to the city council for dedicating close to 10 hours a couple of weeks ago in developing the city council goals for '21 and '22. Staff will bring the draft goals to you for consideration at the March 9th meeting, which is also when the mayor will present the State of the Cities address. As an additional outcome at the retreat, the city council agreed that building credibility as leaders is a priority. You made a commitment to listen to each other, to be good stewards, to take accountability, to be honest and consistent, to encourage collaboration, and to show respect for one another without any public surprises. I would just like to know if you would be interested in adopting this commitment of credibility at your next meeting, and if so, would any of you like to provide input on what that statement might look like?
Any comments? Counsel Garland.
That was a very big paragraph, and I wasn't prepared for it. So I'll defer to the others.
Counselor Todd.
I would like that to be added into the record and sort of work on that a little bit. I'm not sure what you would need from me, Jackie, but I would love to help, for sure.
Counsel Hartman.
Yeah, I agree. I think that would be fantastic to have. I think it was fantastic getting all together and sort of chatting with one another in that setting and being able to hear us all and moving forward in a positive, more inclusive way. I think it would be great to let the community know that we're all here for the greater good of Gladstone. So I think that would be great.
Counsel Tracy.
City Minister Bets, yeah, you know, loop me into the process as you see fit. Happy to help with, you know, any constructive input. Thank you.
Counsel Ripley.
I think that's great. I think anything that we can do to streamline and make things easier, more successful, I think we need to do that. So it sounds like a good idea to me.
All right, Jackie, it sounds like you've got a consensus. So yeah, let us know what you need us to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next is business from the audience, and we have two people. And as I've said before, like I say at every meeting, that if you want to speak, that we needed to have your comments in by noon today, and that you have three minutes to speak. So Tammy, could you call the first person, please?
First person will be Ben Hildner.
Get a thumbs up if you hear me okay? That sounds a little bit better. Okay, good. I want to begin by sharing my condolences to Counsel Alexander. I appreciate the counsel and guests taking the energy to express their sympathies, and I wish to do the same. There is no consolation for the loss of a parent. From there, since it hasn't been done, I'd like to take a few moments to pay respects and acknowledge the land on which we do our business, the original Gladstone residents, the people of the Clackamas, Kalahua, and Malala tribes. I would like to respond to the decision to exclude the audience from video participation in Zoom calls at city council meetings or the random addition of the. Or even the glaring absence of any mention of the Black History Month in a moment of national racial crisis not seen since the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Heck, I would like to bring up Mayor Stimple's attempt to sling mud at her colleague last month when he was nominated by a colleague to be council president. Instead, I want to narrow my comments. I want to talk about the calls for the recall of Mark Scholl as Clackamas County Commissioner. One of Clackamas' newest commissioners, charged with the running services like the county sheriff's department, corrections, community development, parks zoning, code enforcement, health and human services, and much more, has made no secret of his white supremacist values. Personally, I believe that remaining silent speaks volumes about one's complicity. I've spoken with my children. I've made it clear. If they hear racist remarks, I expect them to say something. As my elected representatives, I ask that you hold yourselves to the same standard I hold for my 13 and nine-year-old boys. Quite easily, you can add your name to the list of public figures calling for his resignation. In truth, I encourage you to go further. At each opportunity, in every situation you encounter, at city council meetings, at the PTA, with your children, with your family, with your neighbors, immediately and passionately denounce racist, Islamophobic, and anti-immigrant comments like his. Identity politics is when you target an individual for cherry-picked flaws with no real intention of engaging in meaningful conversation. This is not identity politics. This is not about personal opinions and beliefs, as Mayor Stimple has taken a habit of saying. This is using your status to have an impact where it matters the most, moving our community, and by extension, our world, one step closer to an inclusive society and the end of racial injustice. I want to thank councilors Tracy Todd, Matt Tracy, and Vanessa Hartman for proactively using their voices to respond directly to this example of racism here in our community. Thank you.
Next is Glenda Shearer.
Just a moment, let me. Hi there. Um, I as well would like to offer condolences to Counselor Alexander. It's really hard to lose a loved one, and so I'd like to offer my condolences to him and his family. Hello, Gladstone City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Glenda Sheer with Unheard Parents. Many on the council may know my daughter Daphne. She may have sold Girl Scout cookies to you. She, you may have seen her around town. She's even spoken before city council on several occasions, one being the library, another time about the Gladstone Nature Park, and then about a proposed sale of a parcel of city-owned land. I'm coming to you this evening on her behalf and others in the Gladstone School District. Daphne wants you to know this. She is one of the children stuck at home in isolation, and she wants to go back to school. She doesn't want to go to another school. She only wants to attend John Wetten. She wants, she asked me to ask you for help in opening the schools back up. We purchased our home in Gladstone in 2009. We set about integrating into the community. We made friends. We attended community activities, and we fell in love with Gladstone. We love the community, the people, and the schools. And the district has always been like a family member to us, and right now, we are feeling that that very important family member is missing. It has left a hole in our hearts. From our perspective, there continues to be an overall lack of urgency within Gladstone School District to open up. I don't know if it's fatigue, lack of skill set, fear, misplaced priorities, but it doesn't matter at this point because right now, seven miles from here, so seven miles from Gladstone in Lake Oswego, students have been attending limited in-person instruction since October, and Gladstone hasn't even started and has no plans for in-person offering until April, a full year of disrupted learning for kids. And the April proposal isn't even K-12, it's just K-3. And this is despite the governor's February 15th target that she announced in December. At this snail's pace, I fear that Gladstone will not fully open until spring 2022, and that's not acceptable, and it will decimate the city of Gladstone. I mean, who wants to live in a community where the schools remain shuttered and are the last to open? I know that Gladstone's city council is planning to meet with the district, and I want to emphasize the critical nature of what is transpiring. It is clear that Gladstone School District needs the city's help in some way. Other cities have actually drafted a letter to a school district requesting that they prioritize and make urgent haste in effectively opening the schools. And so that's what I'm asking Gladstone City Council to do. I, I'm not asking you to do what San Francisco did. They actually sued their city. They, they actually sued the school district, and I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just simply asking you to consider writing a letter from the city to the school district that emphasizes the critical nature of schools being stability for a community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Glenda. So that's it from business from the audience. Next is business from council. So I'll start with Counselor Ripley.
I don't have anything this month.
Thank you. Counselor Tracy.
As others have, I too extend my condolences to Greg and his family. It's a terrible loss, and I feel for him. I wish he was here with us, obviously, which Sharon wants to. I really appreciate the work we did in the strategic planning session. I think we've come out of that with a new, kind of a new horizon, and I think it's going to be really important to maintain that and to listen to these citizens who are helping guiding us on our path and on our journey. You know, it makes a lot of difference when we're all respecting each other, and I think we need to get that across the community as well and work with folks by being the example. So I really appreciate my colleagues here on the call, on the council, and the gratitude they've extended to me, and I think we're on a, on the right track. So I continue to encourage us to do this as representatives, set the example for our staff, who's a very professional and highly qualified staff and great people, and then for our citizens as well. So I thank everybody on the council for their participation a couple weeks ago.
Thank you, Counselor Hartman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also want to express my condolences to Counsel Alexander. I just had a couple of updates in regards to the school. You know, there's a lot going on, as many of us know. I see the struggles every day. As you saw my daughter come in here, it's hard, like it's really, really difficult. And so I just wanted the parents to know that I see you. I live your struggles, and I know that every family is different and has many different struggles than even I do. I also have family and friends that are administrators and teachers, and I see their struggle as well. I really, I wish things were different. I really do. I wish my kids could be playing outside with their classmates and learning in person. I also understand that some of these decisions are really extremely difficult to make, and I think right now, I'm hopeful that, you know, we're making the best decision, that we're being as safe as possible for everyone. But I do want parents to know that I do emphasize with the struggles that you are currently experiencing. I know that, I believe the teachers have been begun receiving vaccines, which is fantastic. They are seeming to be focused on getting younger grades, K through third in first, starting with K through one, and then hopefully adding every two weeks, adding a grade. At their special session meeting on the 27th, they did direct to finalize the plan for hybrid learning by March 10th, but they will be remaining in distance learning until spring break. Excuse me. I also wanted to say thank you to everyone who applied to the boards. Even if you weren't chosen, I hope that you can continue to be a part of Gladstone's positive growth. I know we don't normally do this, but I do want to touch on the Mark Scholl comment. I do want to reiterate that, reiterate that, you know, his dehumanizing words are not something that belong in this community. I want members of our community to know that I am sorry if his words affected you and affect your everyday lives. You know, as elected officials, our words are really powerful, and they really matter to a point that they can perpetuate the violence to another level. It can also reassure that our marginalized communities and those that he targeted know that we hear them and that we are there for them. And so I am proud of everyone who is standing in solidarity against his hateful remarks. As someone who takes this very personally and seriously, I just want our community members to know that I am here if you need anything. That kind of hate and violent rhetoric does not belong in the city of Gladstone, and I know that these journeys are difficult. I've had the opportunity to speak with a lot of you about where you all are in your journeys, and I understand that this is hard work, and I appreciate all of those that are willing to be open and vulnerable. You know, in order to move forward, we have to take ownership of our actions. And I'll leave you with one of my favorite quotes that I have hanging here, and it just says, "Healing is not the absence of pain. It is the decision to act in the service of your development rather than your defeat." And that's by Jamila Ly Scott, and I try to live by that every day. I know that this is, this is difficult, you know, for a lot of us, but I just wanted to share that. So thank you, and I'm glad to still be here. Month two, woo-hoo!
Thank you. Counselor Todd.
I'm glad you're here, too. I wanted to let anybody who is interested in reading what's going on within our city, our Public Works Department is incredible, and the reports that they give us every month are entertaining and plot-twisting, and you'll find manholes in the back of somebody's backyard buried, you know, a foot down or whatever. They're very interesting to read, and I think it shows how hard our city workers are working via Gladstone's infrastructure where we need it to be. I did want to give a shout out. I really enjoy the entire Gladstone Police Department's monthly updates, and I wanted to give a shout out to Sergeant Hill and Sergeant Ockerman, who were noted for helping poor stranded people with their keys locked in their car at Heavenly Donuts and the laundromat, and went above and beyond to help out some people in need. They're just, they're really nice to read because you'll see the amount of calls and the follow-up. And, you know, there, there's whole new sections. I've been reading these for years, but, you know, a bias monthly report, where we are year-to-date with different types of crime or calls, and it just, it's, it just shows you how hard everybody's working, and it puts you in touch with these people, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Garlington.
Well, like Counselor Hartman, I'd like to say, yay, I'm still here. It's been an interesting couple of months. I, too, was chuckling at listening or reading about people locking their keys in their car because, oh gosh, I've done that before on the evening of my daughter's graduation. And I commend the Gladstone Police Department for not driving by and to help these people out. I think that that's pretty, pretty awesome. I managed to leave some of my notes at work tonight. I want to thank everyone who applied for the, the boards. It's important work. It's not easy work. There's still homework to do. There's ideas to have. There's conversations to have. There's community building. It's, it's a really, really, really good stepping stone place to start and/or just a place to put your energy towards and, and meet people, to meet the people in your community. And, and I, and I implore anyone sitting out there listening to us tonight to please, please engage yourself with a community group of any kind. There are so many of them in Gladstone, and it's a great place to learn, to communicate, and to engage in understanding something else you didn't know. So reach out. It doesn't hurt, and you, you might be meeting your best friend. So go, go do that. Please go do that. That's all, I think. I'm sure there's more. I'll let it go. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm last. The food pantries moved to the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church off of Glen Echo. They're in the back portables. They're going to be posting when it's going to be open and what services are going to be supplied on social media. So keep, keep a lookout for that. We're in need of volunteers desperately. Thank you, Mindy, for that segue. If you're interested, please send me an email, and I'll forward it on to Northwest Family Services. And I know it's easy to sit behind a keyboard and complain about all the bad and horrible things that are going on in this world. Volunteer. It, it feeds your soul. It's what people need to do. It's my happy place. So I urge you to please volunteer. Last week, I was able to participate in the Housing Authority of Clackamas County's presentation to the Board of County Commissioners, specifically highlighting the Webster Road Senior Affordable Housing Project. And I'm sure all of you have heard me say this many times, but we are the first recipient of the Affordable Housing Bond money from Metro, so that's exciting. And I'm so thrilled that it's here and that it is focused on seniors, which is a demographic that is really overlooked a lot of the times when we're talking about affordable housing, and they are so desperately in need. We, they're expecting to be completed spring of 2022, and Gladstone residents are going to get priority, which is exciting. And I wish that we had 10 more projects just like this on the boards right now, and unfortunately, that would not even be enough. So keep your eyes open for that. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, also called C4, we're really focusing on transportation right now, specifically the I-205 tolling. We all need to pay attention to this. We are going to ask the ODOT tolling guru to come to our meetings the next couple of months and give us a little bit more information. The body as a whole doesn't seem to be very on board with this. Westland, Oregon, sitting Gladstone are going to be impacted the most because of the diversion traffic. And what I learned, which was very interesting, is that the legislative action only stated to study tolling. They did not say to implement tolling, and that is not how it's being presented to us. So we all need to get involved in any way that we can. The numbers that are being thrown around for the toll are anywhere from a dollar to $2.17, which, what scares me is that they have no idea where it's going to fall in that range, and they won't make a commitment until about six months before we have to start paying the toll. So please get involved, stay on top of this one, and tell everybody you know to let their voices be heard. COVID numbers are going up in Gladstone. I mean, they're going down across the state, but Gladstone, we're now at 324 cases, which is up 14 from just last week. Again, safety protocols, still wear a mask, social distance, quarantine if you've got symptoms, and wash your hands. Yesterday, I was on the mayor's and governor's conference call. The good thing that I walked away with is that we're actually getting moved to the high-risk category February 12th, down from extreme risk. Not a whole lot of changes, but there's some, and we get to try that out for two weeks and see how it goes. I have no idea. Their, the rules seem to be changing all the time, so I'm not sure how, how far we're going to get. The one thing regarding COVID is that I really walked away with more questions than I had before. The frustration level on getting vaccines is so high, and not that I can do anything about it, but the number of phone calls I'm getting is crazy. I wish I could get everybody vaccines, but I can't. And I'd love to blame somebody, but I can't. It's just, this is unprecedented. We don't know how to do this. So my advice to everybody, please go to official credible sites to get your information. I'm getting phone calls from people that have received spam phone calls and emails with vaccine-too-good-to-be-true stories, and I'm telling you, it's too good to be true. There's no shortcuts here. Please go to credible sources. And also, if you know somebody that had, that got the vaccine, don't be bitter that they got it and you didn't. That's so ridiculous. Instead, be happy. There's one more person out there that's not spreading the virus. That's how you need to look at it. So I know we're all scared. There's, we have zero control over this, but be kind and be calm, and that's what it's going to take to get us through. So that's all that I have for today. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? I can keep talking if nobody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion was made by Counselor Garlington, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Do we have any further discussion?
I like how fast that came out.
Yeah, I'll keep talking. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy. Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, the meeting's adjourned at 8:59 PM. Thank you, everybody.